Looking at the one we just built for liberals.
Yeah, sure. How are you, Larry?
Okay. We'll have a pledge and a prayer led by Councilmember Michael Proctor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you for the ability to gather here tonight and govern this great community, ask your blessing on our meeting to give us wisdom, to make decisions that are appropriate and best for all concerned and with a prosperous vision for the future. And do you stand in mind?
Formal of the agenda.
Just to make a motion, will you read the agenda?
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Citizen comments? Anybody in the audience that might speak? Say no?
I would like to point out that we could submit a letter to the council from the...
Okay, yeah. From Mr. Funky.
We can have the record reflect that.
And it was sent, and I think you all have got it, but we'll have a receiving file of that letter, so. Okay, item F, consent agenda. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes. Item H1.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item H1, it's a rezoning request for 101 North Goddard Road and adjoining property. So a quick background, this Garber LLC has submitted a rezoning application on behalf of the developer, Mr. Pio Hernandez and Bob Armstrong, for the property located at 1001 South Goddard Road and adjoining land to the west, as shown on the map on exhibit F.1A, which I'll show you on the following slides. Properties are bounded by South Goddard Road on the east, Swanee Drive on the north, South Main Street on the west, and West 23rd on the south. This property is currently zone R1 and the developer would like to rezone to an R2 to allow for development of duplexes on the property. The property to the east is in the county and is zone rural residential. The properties to the north are zone single-family R1, and the properties to the west are zone R3 multifamily. Planning Commission approved this rezoning on September 13th, 2021. So this analysis, and I can, obviously it's a little bit cumbersome of all that script on there, but basically what we have for review for rezoning is 17 parts. They're not weighed in any particular way, it's not considered definitive, it's only meant to guide the conversation. So this is included in your agenda packet, and I'm going to run through it really quickly. Feel free to stop me at any time. Basically, this is just, like I said, just to guide the conversation. What are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? So there's a church building that is not, and purple is my language for it, there is a church building that is not in use on one lot, the adjoining lot is vacant. Properties to the north are single-family detached, properties to the west are multifamily, and to the east, the property is agricultural. What is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relation to the request? The subject property is R1 currently. The property to the north is R1, the property to the west is R3, and the property to the east is rural residential to the county. Property to the south is R1, there's a small lot in southeast corner there. Is the length of time the subject property has remained undeveloped vacant as zone a factor of consideration? It could be considered a factor given the zoning, but not the dominant factor, dominant factor being existed as a church land prior to 2018 when it was sold, so it's not, I wouldn't say it's a dominant factor. Were the requests correct and error in the application of these regulations? No, there is no correction to error. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or change, or changing conditions? So the big change obviously would be, city is growing exponentially fast, we're experiencing a large residential increase, most of the increase is single-family detached owner-occupied dwellings, there is a need for rental units as well as a need for density buildings, so that's the biggest change that's happening in the city. Do adequate sewer disposal, sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on site? So yes, city sewers, city water and streets currently can be used to serve that property, they're not in any lack currently. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for runway easements and access control? Yes, one lot is platted and another one, prominent lot, is unplatted, so they would have to go through a replating if they were to, if we were to move forward, if the city council would move forward with the rezoning. Would a screening plan be necessary for existing or potential uses of subject property? No, the adjoining properties are residential and the proposed use is residential, we only require a screening if it's commercial, but any residential, then we require a screening. Is super old vacant land or building available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? And I'm saying no, because the current zoning for R2 is around 81 acres out of approximately 1,946 acres, which accounts for about 4% of the land, available land, residential land in the city. So the available land that's being, that could be developed for R2 is pretty negligible, and obviously if it goes to R3, it's even less so. So rezoning this would actually increase the amount of available acreage for development. That's without having to go through a conditional use permit. If the request is business or industrial, which it's not, are such uses needed to provide more services and employment opportunities? 10 doesn't apply, this is a residential request for rezoning, not an industrial, commercial one. Is the subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning which has been restricted? Yes, it could go through a conditional use permit. If it was to remain R1, they would go through a similar process with publication and request and go back before Planning Commission if it was to remain R1. To what extent would the removal of restrictions, i.e. the removal of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other properties in the neighborhood? That is a good question, it's very hard to conceptualize that, really to bring a significant number to it, a definitive number, but according to Jack Mannion, who's a residential land analyst for such a county, since the lot is empty, this development would increase the property values of surrounding property. Negative impact could be increased car traffic on Goddard Road. So the positive, by and large, is going to be an increased property taxes for the city and increased property value for the adjacent property owners theoretically. The proposed developments would be significantly of a higher property valuation than the existing ones, negative impact would be more car traffic on Goddard Road. Would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and intended purpose of these regulations? Yes, the use would remain residential, so we're not talking about doing something like golf course or tanning bed or something of that nature, it's going to still remain residential. The city desires to focus on infill development, this would be considered infill development. 14, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? I'm going to go ahead and say yes on that one, because page 17 of the comprehensive plan outlines housing objectives to include, and I quote, "provide for multiple multifamily dwellings, retirement housing and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community." That's page 17 of the comprehensive plan, which was designed in 2015. What is nature and support of oppositions to the request? So this one is saying, what's the, what are people saying is negative about it, what are they saying is positive about it? Support comes in the request for more rental properties in Goddard, and this is something that we've heard again and again, both before city council and before Planning Commission and privately, as people have come into my office and they ask for more rental properties, as people desire to move to the city, obviously the demand for rental properties and housing by and far and large across the board is in high demand, being as people want to be in the school district and be in a relatively safe neighborhood, which is Goddard. Opposition comes and the desire for certain neighborhoods to remain relatively unchanged in the land use composition for single-family detached housing, that's by and large one of the largest complaints we hear, is that people still want just single-family and they don't want any other types of land uses. Is there any information or other recommendations on the press available from professional persons or persons of related expertise which would be helpful in evaluation? So as previously mentioned, I do reach out to Jack Mannion to ask for sort of a more unbiased opinion. General planning practices as well encourages the introduction of increased density development, so when I speak to other planners in other cities, they all of them are looking at how they can increase density, how they can maximize city infrastructure, especially city water, city sewer, streets. Density obviously would increase the amount of property taxes that are being tailored to and provided with city sewers and city services. And as I said, Jack Mannion, as I reach out to, he says, by and large, it would be considered a positive for property that are biding it. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or hardship imposed upon the applicants by not approving the request? So would the developer receive hardship if we refused to rezone it? And would that hardship be outweighed by the positive gains to the surrounding neighborhood? In this particular case, I would say no, it'd be more beneficial if it was rezoned, simply because the health, the health of individuals in the city of Goddard would benefit from more walkable developments. This is in very close proximity to Main Street, and as we just had Fall Fest, you can imagine more people walking from 23rd and Pawnee or 23rd Goddard Road to Fall Fest. Increased walkability actually increases the health of the overall and the well-being of the individuals, and with the increased property taxes, it would increase the personal spending ability of each individual adjoining the property. So this is what's being proposed to be rezoned, this lot and this lot. This is Goddard Road, 23rd. This is the zoning, I did some hash marks, so don't let that confuse you, this is just simply re-outlining what you see here. This is all R1, this is R3, this is rural residential out here, and this, this small gray here is industrial road. There is a small publication cost per state law that's required if it was approved, it's legally approved as the form. It's recommended city council, both one, waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice and approve the ordinance outlining exhibit H.1C with a motion and followed by a roll call. We do have Will Clevenger of Garber, and he's going to step up now if he will, he represents the developer, and if you do have any further questions, feel free to ask him directly.
Good evening, Will Clevenger with Garber, here on behalf of the applicant. And we're excited about the prospect for this development here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is that property just basically where the church is sitting on and then behind the church?
It includes the church and then to the south and southwest.
It's not that area where the community garden is on?
Correct, yes, not part of our application.
This lot and this lot right here.
So my own question is, would you guys be able to develop that if the other city lot wasn't a part of it, or is this a standalone development?
This is a standalone development.
So, Mr. Funky, just to tack on to what you submitted today, this is a separate rezoning of the other lot, just...
I don't know where your current city boundary is right now for what is owned by the city and what is owned by the...
Pretty much right where that dividing line is.
This is all private, this orange, this little triangle here and this rectangle over here.
That's all church property. We took over that other part about 20 years ago.
This parcel right here is city-owned, this parcel right here is all city-owned, right here. This is the current community garden.
And there is a pipeline, 20, well, there's a, essentially what equates to a 50-foot easement indoor setback, there's a 40-foot high-pressure pipeline easement and a 50-foot building setback requirement, as well as going north and south, just to the right of, kind of see that drainage line, that discoloration, just to the upper right-hand corner of the community garden, there's a sanitary sewer line that runs, or water line, I can't remember which, and a 10-foot utility easement through there as well. That also goes through that private parcel.
Give you a little history on that. 20 years ago on South Main, stormwater drainage and paving of the street came through, the church got whacked for that whole, that whole section from the road all the way down to 23rd and all the way over to Main Street in taxes, specials. And they couldn't afford that, and they were going to go under, so I spearheaded the deal to buy that land because I didn't deem it fair that the church be subject to paying all of that, and it was undeveloped. And so that's the reason that's there. And so now the church has been vacated, and so basically, they, when we made this deal, they were going to build on and do all kinds of things, but since then, they've disbanded and they're no longer in operation, so what their plans were and what their agreement with us was, I can't see that it could be still in effect because they're no longer in existence, so I'm not sure why, how they would want to hold us, you know, for the agreement we had to not allow somebody to build on there if they don't own the land anymore and if they aren't using it for church purposes, but...
How many units do you guys plan on getting?
We haven't even designed it yet, just, this would be the first step before we could go to that.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm completely for it, it gets more, like I keep pounding over and over again, it gets more rooftops in a three-mile radius than our commercial development, and that's exactly what we're wanting, so.
Well, it's close to other multifamily dwellings down there on South Main, so it's not that if there's anything close by, it's multifamily.
So do we need a motion to waive the reading?
Yes.
Motion?
I'll motion, make a, I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. Roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Leland.
Yes.
Mayor Narkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
And it'll be ordinance 877.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, on December of last year, the city accepted a donation of land from Downtown Investments. It is four acres, located just to the north of the Orshlands and south of what is now the Rustic Creek Development, with this being the 900 block of Main Street, North The agreement before you essentially lays out that you need a storage, has made an offer to the city for a hundred, I'm sorry, for $1.50 per square foot, which equates to approximately $263,175. There's also a $5,000 earnest deposit with a 180-day due diligence period, during which time the buyer may provide written notice of the waiver of the period if they want to expedite the transaction time. We also stipulate that we have no knowledge of environmental spills or any sort of contamination or any remediation that may have occurred from the parcel, and that there'll be a survey done and conducted by the purchaser to identify the exact area to which that $1.50 price would be applied for the purchase. We have 36 months for the construction to be completed, they would begin construction within 24 months, the closing costs, deeds, recordings, title commitments are shared equally, with the buyer being responsible for title insurance and paying their share of the transaction costs to the commercial real estate broker, which the city has not been charged as we were approached for the purchase. And again, this is the area which was donated property. In accordance with our financial policy, if the council approves this purchase, the one-time revenues would be placed into the capital improvement fund for use as a capital item or whatever legally, you know, capital purchase that, that's a one-time expenditure that we could apply that to. And the document was authored by the city attorney's firm as scrivener of record, and are there any questions over the agreement?
It just had so long to start building, right?
Yes, sir, they, within, within two years, and then also to have that completed within 36 months, and then we have essentially substantial completion language in there that, that obviously if they're in the middle of finalizing stuff, we wouldn't...
And they can't flip the land.
So if there are no other questions, it's recommended that by a motion and a voice vote that you consider authorizing the mayor to execute the settled agreement as presented.
You have the motion. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Voice vote.
Right? Is that it?
Yeah.
Do we have a roll call?
No, it's just a voice vote.
Okay, so, H3?
Item H3 is the Rustic Creek Condition Phase 1 Grading Improvement Change Order Number 1 for 20,000 cubic yards of common excavation and 32 square yards of compact fill totaling $30,032 in total aggregate contract change. The council accepted petitions for Rustic Creek back on February 6th, 2020. On January 19th of this year, you approved Resolution 2108, which was the sanitary sewer stormwater paving and water infrastructure and grading improvements. The city then issued in May $2,195,000, of which, I'm sorry, $2,195,000, of which $2,107 was for the actual improvement, with the remainder being for the capitalized interest on the temporary notes. What you have before you is also the tablet, table included in your staff report, which shows the contractors, sanitary sewer being McCullough with the temp note authorization, the actual contract bid award for their bid amount, and then the unencumbered balance from the, which is essentially the difference between the amount and the authorization that was issued, which means essentially costs that are going to be applied for engineering and inspection during that process, as well as any subsequent change orders that may need to occur. We also have paving for Pearson, grading for Pearson, stormwater for McCullough and water improvement for McCullough. Now you'll notice that Pearson and McCullough are bolded and italics for the staff report and for the PowerPoint, and that's because these are the two improvements upon which the change order would be impacting on their issuance as they were, they were issued together in that temp note. So we have an unencumbered balance of $231,625. So what we're requesting is for the council to authorize the change order totaling $30,032, as we stated previously, which amends the total contract amount for Pearson to $791,474.50. Change order one's being presented as this amount exceeds staff authority for the change order expenditure in accordance with our purchase policy. Grading and stormwater petitions, temporary notes, I cite those in there that are authorizing the improvement under which the change orders being applied. The total amount again, with the combined issuance of the two is also reflected in that chart for that $865,000. So what we have again is that $86,500 is the remainder that will be used, so we have a remaining balance of $56,468 for any subsequent change orders that may need to occur for those two improvements, grading and paving.
I guess I just don't understand the one change order, is there a raising of the cost of doing business, or is it an additional work needing to be done?
I'll defer to Harland on the technical nuances, but the long and the short of it from my understanding is, is that there was some additional excavation and compaction based upon how the bid docs were constructed by the developers' engineers, so it was, as I stated in the, in the agenda report, it was approved by both the design engineer and reviewed by Harland, and I know there was extensive dialogue between Harland and the design firm regarding the calculations and what was needed and why, and why we were off this much in that, would you like to elaborate, Harland?
Sure, right. Yeah, Larry, it's not related to an increased cost or charge for them to doing business, what it, it's, it's related to actually, they, they, the contractor keeps track, keeps load counts of how many loads they haul from place to place during the excavation process and, and fill process, and they brought that, brought it to the attention of me that, that once they got to the end, they felt like they had handled more quantity of dirt in the process of, you know, mass grading the site, which is, you know, regrading the entire site. And so I said, well, my initial response would be no, because that shouldn't have been taken into account in your bid, so I had them talk to the design engineer, and, they expressed to me that it was, I think, related to the topsoil, meaning, you know, they have to strip topsoil initially, they stockpile, then they do the grading, and then they bring the topsoil back, you know, so that you put soil that will support vegetation. And in that process there, in the discussion with the design engineer, he, he replied back to me that his notation could have been a little bit vague, misinterpreted, or easily misinterpreted perhaps during the bidding process, and so he ultimately, in discussion back with the contractor, said, I feel like maybe there was some vague, vagaries in the, vagueness in the, in the notation on the plan with regard to double handling the topsoil and that sort of thing, and ultimately just felt like, I guess it was justified. So I guess when the design engineer tells me he thinks it's justified, then he's the one that designed the plan, so I would have to, I guess, not disagree with him and, and agree, maybe the contractor in this case had a valid argument in that the amount of dirt that they handled was larger than what they may have originally bid, so.
My question is, how do you go about accepting bids when somebody can come? when somebody can come back laboring on another thirty thousand dollars?
Well, I think those numbers were provided to the design engineer for comparison purposes. And I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, the answer would be no, you know, to a contractor coming back after giving a bid, after having the ability to look at the set of plans. That's why I was reluctant initially to give any support to this. But the design engineer and the contractor talked, and there was some language in the plans that the design engineer added to the plans that I guess may not have indicated that, hey, the contractor was going to have to double handle some of this material. And so his conclusion to me and recommendation to me that he thought that there could have been some vagueness in how that was presented. And I asked him, well, you know, did you, or she, the one that prepared the notation on the plans? And he said yes. But anyway, his conclusion was that the assertion by the contractor in this case was reasonable and valid, and so I guess I would have to agree with what that design engineer said. So that would be my thought to why I can support it.
So is this increase in cost going to be okay with the developer?
Well, that would be, I believe, it's within the petition amount, well within the petition amount. And obviously, the estimates given to the developer are typically figured on actual engineers' estimates. And we're still, we have contingency, but there's ten percent contingencies built into any project amount. And so in this case, a previous, an amount, a higher amount has been authorized by the petition. And so I'm going to say yes, because his engineer has supported this little piece.
I guess I'll ask Brian, can we be held liable for that thirty thousand of the city?
Could the city be held liable for it? Not likely. I mean, it sounds like the best way to analogize this is arguably a change, additional work that perhaps wasn't, I don't know, was contemplated but wasn't clearly spelled out in the initial design. I mean, if the work needs to be done, the work needs to be done. Essentially, and what Harland said is, is they remove topsoil, and they move it to, from point A to point B. And then they actually, once they get the topsoil removed, do the grading. And my take was that they actually needed to remove more topsoil than what they anticipated. And so then therefore moving it from point B back to respreading it across the grading work to allow for that additional, you know, to be, so, topsoil so that they can then plant stuff on in the right of way and whatnot, was more than what was anticipated. That's how I kind of filtered it. I don't know if that's exactly right, Harland, but that was kind of my non-engineer, non-general contractor read on things.
What else can we do on the improvements?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's not like they're going to go back and, I think, remove the work that they've done. I think part of this is just being, trying to be reasonable and equitable with a contractor. And if they have a valid argument, you know, take a look at it and see if it passes the merit from a technical standpoint. So based upon the loan tickets that I think were provided, I believe, to the design engineer, he looked at his calculations and determined he thought it was valid.
McCullough and Pearson have both done a lot of work for us in the past. I mean, it's not like they've done this before.
Yeah, this is actually a Pearson, they did the earthwork. They're the ones that handled the entire earthwork. So, but again, I guess my suspicion initially was, well, wasn't that included in your bid? So I mean, it wasn't like we just rolled over and said, hey, we're going to sign you a blank check here. You know, we investigated it, and then I passed it on for additional backup from the design engineer, asking him to evaluate it and see, you know, is this justified or not. I guess the thing, in future phases, obviously, if there are, you know, is, let's make sure then our notations and our explanation to contractors, you know, are not disputed.
Well, you're the subject matter expert on that, so I don't have a problem with it, but.
I mean, ultimately, yes, it's like you say, Larry, it's ultimately up to the developer. The city's not paying any additional cost. It's up to the developer through the petition process to pay for this cost.
Yeah, it's within the petition amount.
But no, we don't just approve these carte blanche, you know. The radar starts, the radar goes up when anything like this comes up, so.
No, and it will just end up being rolled onto the special assessment. Yeah, the city at large is not obligated for this in any way, shape, or form. Only the development itself and the future home buyers in that development and the specials that they pay.
We already approved a higher amount.
Which, yeah, the, we've essentially bid one-point-four-two million or one-point-three million. We issued, which is what the initial estimate was based on, is two-point-one million. So there's just over six-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand remaining. So, well within what their calculated special assessment payments might be.
We got a question.
The down and dirty is we just got rubber stamped.
Well, it's good. You're asking the same questions that we asked.
Yeah, I've been regarded as rubber stamping.
That was bad.
Yeah, 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 that's right. For all of the reasons that Harland described, I mean, that these are not typically requests that are viewed favorably, you know, that, you know, we do look at them and scrutinize them to make sure, hey, is this a, is this a good faith request? And, you know, we want to be fair with our contractors and suppliers in town on our projects, and, you know, or was this, you know, a situation where the contractor just screwed up and underbid, and they're asking for more money for the exact same what they bid? And what I heard from Harland was, he looked at that, he scrutinized that, and he thinks this is a fair request.
Harland's engineer.
And I would defer to Harland.
And Harland's engineer.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer.
Broad shoulders.
Right, and if you got the design firms saying, this is valid, I don't know why we hold it that way.
Well, then I make a motion to approve.
Hey, we wouldn't want to die. Motion by Brad, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed.
Mayor and City Council, this is item H4. It's a discussion of sewer and water benefit fee structure. This is a discussion only, so there's not going to be any actions directly taken other than at the end when we talk about possibly further down the road, maybe passing an ordinance to reflect what's discussed here today. Feel free to stop me at any time. There's going to, I'm going to try to make this as concise as possible. Obviously, there's a lot of complex moving factors, but like I said, feel free to stop me at any time and ask any questions you want. As the city of Godot grows, the demand that's put on its water and sewer infrastructure increases. This demand results in new costs associated with maintenance, construction, and management of the city sewer and water system. In order to pay for these costs, a proactive and equitable solution has been drafted for discussion only today. If you have a city code address the growing needs of city services, these solutions are outlined in two parts and are displayed in the following slides and in exhibit H.4A. Current city code that is being presented for consideration of many in our inclusion is found in Chapter 15, Article 1, and Chapter 15, Article 2. A city council's reviewing a fee structure that will help the city offset the cost of water and sewer infrastructure. Part one would be a sewer plant benefit fee, which would be sewer plant equity fee, excuse me. That part suggests charging a sewer plant equity fee in addition to a sewer connection fee to assist with the cost of expanding and maintaining the sewer treatment plant. Number two would be city infrastructure benefit fee. This part suggests charging a new development benefit fee to assess the potential at-large costs the city would incur for oversizing new development in anticipation of future growth. So sewer plant equity fee, in this case, would be, each new permit request shall be charged a one-time fee in addition to tap fees according to its land use. This fee shall increase by two-point-five percent and only from the date of its adoption. The sewer plant benefit fee shall be, equity fee, excuse me, shall be based upon the master fee schedule, which we have, and which will be updated as needed by resolution amending the master fee schedule. So this is something that we reflected off of, or emulated from Wichita. They have something similar. Basically, we would say, if you're a residential home builder and you're applying for a building permit, you get charged your sewer tap fee, your water tap fee, and in this case, a sewer plant equity fee on top of that, an additional fifteen hundred. If you're commercial, it would be based on line and meter size. So a two-inch line, two-inch meter would be three thousand on top of your tap and water, and then by reflection of line and meter, it would go up from there. That's number one. Number two is a city infrastructure benefit fee. And what this looks like is basically you have development one. It's going in, we have our lateral main, our lateral sewer main, lateral water main. We have a lift station, and all this is being used and built to accommodate development one. Development two comes along, and they are going to have additional infrastructure to go into it as well. So in anticipation of development two coming along, we're going to oversize sewer main and water main and lift station. So the question comes about, if we're going to accommodate development two, and we're going to oversize these in anticipation of that future development, where does the cost come from? And that's kind of what we've been discussing internally. How would we basically collect that cost? How would that fee be absorbed? And so here with the laterals going in, if they connect to the oversized mains and oversized lift station, how would we collect that fee? So option one is to emulate Wichita. Wichita has a fee that they put in place that basically calculates it based off the square footage of the future land development. So what that looks like is this. Like I said, feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions at all. If the development two is fifty acres, let's say, hypothetically, that equates to about two-point-one million square feet. If you take that two-point-one million square feet, multiply it by zero-point-zero-four-four for water, zero-point-zero-six-two for sewer, then you get ninety-five thousand and a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand respectively. That's a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. You divide that by the nineteen lots that you see right here, which is about twelve thousand per year. You assess that over a fourteen-year period like you would a bond or any other specials, and that comes out to about seventy-two dollars per month. So what they're saying is, we have a future development coming, we're oversizing our infrastructure, so let's charge them a cost to recoup that at-large cost that the city's incurring faster, basically. That's one way of looking at recapturing that cost. Another option would be what I would consider as special tailoring. So you take the oversized sewer, the oversized water, the oversized lift station, and we say, if development one is using a certain portion of that, the city at large is going to cover the remaining portion to oversize it. So what we could do there is we would look at the engineering costs. If the lift station costs five-hundred thousand originally, and we know that it's going to be used for development two, if we oversize it, and now it's six-hundred thousand dollars, that's a difference of a hundred thousand dollars. If the mains were originally five-hundred thousand dollars, and we oversize them for development two, and now it's six-hundred thousand dollars, that's a difference of a hundred thousand dollars. So the city has to float that oversizing of two-hundred thousand dollars. So what we would do is we say, if development two is going to be taking a hundred percent of that oversizing, we're going to assess them for that two-hundred thousand dollars over the nineteen lots over fourteen years, like a normal bond assessment would be, per lot, per lot, which basically just means equally. Those are the two options that we've come up internally. Financially, none approved as to form. The recommendations that were presented to City Council today would be direct staff in one of the following three options. Option one would be develop an ordinance reflecting sewer plant equity fee and a sewer infrastructure benefit fee as presented, with the city infrastructure benefit fee being calculated based on a similar fee structure from the city of Wichita, and considering the ordinance for formal adoption at a later date. And the option two would be to develop an ordinance reflecting basically the same thing, sewer plant equity fee and a city infrastructure fee, except we would do the special tailoring instead, with an ordinance being for formal adoption at a later date. Or you can table it for future discussion.
What is the special tailoring?
Special tailoring is just this one. We would take the difference for the oversizing, and if we say that development two is going to be using a hundred percent of that oversizing, we're going to assess them for that difference. And so, excuse me, it's as opposed to taking just sort of a standard cost, flat rate cost, we're going to have an engineering cost that has a more precise number behind it.
So let's say we do the first one, but a development in the future can't go for that one. You have to do a little bit of a higher cost share. The developer has to pay slightly more. Are you able to adjust that? Or will we be able to adjust that of the city?
Not initially, unless that's something that we'd want to discuss, and that's where this conversation comes up. If we're saying that the zero-point-zero-four-four and the zero-point-zero-six-two won't cover that a hundred percent of the at-large cost, then perhaps it would be better to do the special tailoring. Because special tailoring, we would just simply say, we're going to take whatever the oversizing of that main, that lift station, whatever it's going to be, we're going to assess them a hundred percent of that oversized difference. If this one might or might not cover a hundred percent of the oversized cost, then the city would have to, at large, would have to float that difference. So if we had this for development two, let's say, and it only covered ninety percent of the cost, then the city at large would be floating ten percent of the remaining cost until some future development would be able to tie into it.
I like, I like the tailoring one, because you're able to adjust it from development to development, because right now, we're so, we're so flat that putting in lift stations, it's going to be different from each area that we're in. And if we put in the first option, we're kind of limiting our options and tailoring it from development to development. The first option is nice, for in the future, when that infrastructure's already there and development wants to come in, then they have to pay that, right? And then that ends up helping further development and so on and so forth. But how do we put the infrastructure in place and then have this number of development that's going to tack onto it? How do we manage that?
And that's kind of where the discussion is. If the special tailoring is going to cover a hundred percent of the oversizing cost, every future development would basically be assessed a hundred percent of the cost for that future infrastructure, unless we oversize it again for another future development. So we're kind of playing leapfrog here with developments. If one development's in place, we have the infrastructure accommodating it, and we know another development's coming in place, so we oversize, that other development's going to absorb that cost in terms of special tailoring. But if we're saying that, well, down the road, we're going to have another development, and then another development, and then another development, if it just keeps going, then we would have to take that into consideration. How much oversizing are we going to have on the front end? And then how would we structure that for every following development down the road?
Harland, what would you suggest?
Well, let me ask you a question. So is the original development, though, they are paying, they are being assessed for their five-hundred thousand?
That's right.
So they are, they are absorbing theirs, okay.
That's right.
Okay. Option one, to me, seems a little arbitrary. I mean, you're just, you're just throwing a number out there because that's the city of Wichita number. Now, is that actually what the city at large cost, carrying costs are going to be under, which is more specific to option two, it addresses that more? However, the question you're going to have there from developers are, well, you charge this guy, my next-door neighbor, five cents a square foot, now you're charging me eight cents a square foot. You know, you're going to have that argument come up if you, but that's the most equitable for the city. You know what I'm saying?
I paid sixty-dollar specials, the next people paid five-dollar specials.
Well, I don't, I don't argue with that. It's the cost, you know, it's the cost of getting the infrastructure to that specific development.
And the oversize may fluctuate based upon the proximity to existing infrastructure. We know four inches may be serving that initial development, but we know there's empty fields on two or three sides. Maybe we want to oversize with a six-inch or an eight-inch if the flow can support that. Then at that point, the city at large covers the oversize, so the development that's there first pays their fair share and no more than. And then future developments come in and pay their fair share. So if we, development one needs four inches, and we oversize with eight, and then the next development only needs two, they're only going to pay for two.
Their portion.
Their portion of what they're plugging in.
That makes sense.
So basically, what, to capture on what Brian just said, assuming there was a third development over here, development three, let's say development two only needed to be assessed 100,000, then the remaining 100,000 could be assessed to development three as needed, as for the tailoring of the engineering review. We'll say that 500,000 is going to be for development one, only 100,000 will be for development two, and then the remaining 100,000 will be for development three as needed to accommodate the development, to be for the infrastructure.
I, I kind of, I mean, option two seems like Fitzgoddard better, because we're not Wichita.
Right.
We don't have the scalability, it adds on disproportionate risk per development. However, we also run into the issue of, if we have a more expensive area to build because of a lift station, it may not, it may significantly be delayed, even though from a city planning purpose and, you know, getting the 3,000 rooftops in a three, three-mile radius might be a goal of ours. So I can see the argument for one, if we, and maybe we just have to make that cost a little bit higher because of all the lift stations we've had to use, then city Wichita, we figure out that cost, and then create a goal, if there is over, we put it back into it, save for a later date.
I think, I think one was going to have to go with the tailoring option, just because the city of Goddard has to be flexible in its current stage in trying to grow and develop, because these areas, they vary, they're different.
Well, and keep in mind, there is some history out there, too, for Elk Ridge, and St. Andrews, and Spring Hill, you know, they have paid 100%, so there really hasn't been any push-off on any other development. So you have that, which is, which is just kind of 100% developer, so I would say the, the tailoring option, you know, is certainly reasonably developer-friendly, it's just, you need, the, the, the city needs to recoup their costs if, if, if they're going to have to carry them for a period of time until that phase two develops.
Next development.
Next development develops, yes.
Yes, so I was careful what you think so.
Which, you'll notice, we jump back and forth between benefit fee and equity fee, and that's why Kevin's here this evening, is, is the statutes and how things are issued and what can be accounted for, the labeling is important.
Yeah, that, that is true. What we're talking about with the benefit fee in the second grouping is statutory, there's a statute that contemplates, you may build something, it may be a water main, a sewer main, a main trafficway-type street, that's going to benefit a bunch of developments, but you only have the first development now, and kind of work through that process of, okay, what do we assess the first development, understanding we're going to oversize lines because if the first development's 80 lots, and we think it's going to be 800 lots eventually, city at large will cover that difference, and as those other developments come on, we will assess them a benefit fee. The advantage of a benefit fee, and this, this doesn't go to option one or two, but a benefit fee can be collected like a special assessment, it's not, not sort of a contractual agreement you have with a developer that says, well, you're going to pay X amount, and then if it turns out the development doesn't go well, and all you have is a development agreement that said, you know, they were going to pay this amount, you don't have a tax lien the way you have with a special assessment. So that's, to me, a big advantage of the benefit fee. Now, between option one and two, I guess, in my experience, I would probably trend the direction you're going, that, that it's still a little bit case-by-case for Goddard, and it makes sense to me, when, when you're looking at that, that first phase of a development, you're going to engineer it and try to figure out, where's this going? What are the next four developments going to be? Let's put that in now, and that may be different for those three or four developments on, you know, the northwest part of town, then the southeast part of town, and so I've seen that work really well, and, and you're right, you're, the scalability, you're not quite as homogeneous as Wichita is yet, where you know you're going to have maybe a large number of, of lots developing every year, and so you're just cranking out that, that specific fee. So they would both work, the, the key thing is, the, the benefit fee is good, and, and so you have a situation where maybe the first phase develops, you impose the special assessments for all their laterals and all their interior streets, and they get an assessment for a portion of the main, as we're calling it. And then when the next phase develops, you include, hopefully, we remember that this is the policy, so when that next phase developments are developed, and we have these main lines, we want to include in the petitions recognition that not only we're asking for the lateral sewers and water, we're also going to have a benefit fee amount, and then once you get to the assessment proceedings for that, you have assessments, and then you have a benefit fee collected exactly the same way as all of the assessments, and it's, it works really well if you can get to that sort of level. So I think where the discussion is going is excellent, that sort of recognizing, you're maybe not to a place yet where you have that scale of development, and you are going to need to address things specifically, and the water main or the lift station may be different for one part of town, and just to deal with that specifically.
Kevin, along those same lines there very, very well, maybe a, a need to plug in this plant equity fee when the, when the, when the city gets a handle on that, whatever that may need to be for the actual wastewater treatment.
Right.
And what if we don't oversize? Well, let's say a development goes in immediately adjacent to the city, and it's only taking up half a mile, and there's empty fields on three sides, and then you have development that wants to occur next to the development that just went in. They would then need to run a half a mile of line just to get to their line, which then drives that development cost up and the specials on those property owners that are coming in. So the point is, is the way we try and design our, our, our developments now is, is we try and look at, what's the capacity of the lift station, what's the, the baseload for the sewer main, where's the growth in and around that area, which is why we do these growth corridor studies, and then we can say, okay, well, we know, we know we need a 12-inch, but a 12-inch, we really can't flow, so then by playing with lift station vault depths and, and pump sizes, and whether you're replacing the pump outright or replacing impellers as opposed to the whole pump, which is more cost-effective, we're able to do it incrementally and cost-effectively, and so by doing, say, the actual tailoring, that allows us then to, to be able to pattern each one and grow prudently and smartly, keep development costs down for not only the developers, but for our future neighbors. So we, we want to just, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to go buy a sports car if you know your wife's pregnant with twins, and that's your family car. And so we want to kind of do the same, same kind of approach of, if, if we know we need a sedan or a minivan, that's what we want to try and plan.
And I think that option two is not, you know, just taking an arbitrary number and then potentially running the risk of pushing some costs over onto the city at large, you know what I'm saying? That, you know, because we really don't know if that four cents and that six cents a square foot.
It's protecting us, too.
Yeah.
It's protecting our current residents.
Right.
Yeah, we would also want to make a distinction between the city benefit, infrastructure benefit fee, we're talking about assessments, and number one being the sewer plant equity fee is actually a cost that we collect upfront as a fee that we charge to a home builder, so they would pay upfront just like a tap fee. So it would be something that's assessed here, where number two would be an assessment.
Well, I'm for option two. That's, that's what I'm running towards. All right, you guys, appreciate your input there.
Well, I was going to add, I, I think it's defensible, if, if you're dealing with the developer, and the cost of the main is X, that's what the cost of the main is, it's not the per square foot, which maybe is beneficial to the city and not beneficial to the developer, or vice versa, and so if you get in those difficult negotiations, you're just dealing with the actual cost of the project, and, and probably a city at large component, you may say, look, we think this is your benefit from this main, we know it's going to benefit, you know, four other phases, and we're covering that, and, and we'll impose a benefit fee, and hopefully it all develops, and we get that paid back over time.
This allows us the flexibility to invest in infrastructure for future development, or helps the city grow, and not put all the burden on one development all at once.
And in staff's cost-benefit analysis that we do in-house, both Micah and I concurrently, we take into how many lots in that initial development are needed to cover the city's costs, so we know that that base development, the property taxes generated from that will cover the city at large's costs, so we're essentially earmarking those funds for the principal and interest requirements for the debt service that would be necessary.
So how's it, how's it being done right now? Is it being done more like the, the option two, or?
We, we haven't had to do this yet.
Okay.
However, we do do our, for every development that we've done since I've been here, we've done our own cost-benefit analysis, and like when we did the southeast growth corridor that we know can, can carry 600 to 800 homes, we know that 55 homes are going to cover the city's at-large portion.
Okay.
We're kind of establishing a framework on how we want to do it going in a future step, recreating every time.
Every, case by case, every single.
Right, and you'll see in my staff.
They all see shit, they say.
Yeah.
You know?
No, that's true, yeah.
That's right, they're, they're, yeah.
Very true.
They're all talking, they're, they all talk.
Yeah.
And if we don't have something.
In place.
In place.
Okay.
It makes us look bad.
I think, I think option two fits us.
I'm for option two. All right, so what, what kind of vote do we need?
You just need to direct staff to develop an ordinance reflecting the sewer plant equity fee and the city infrastructure benefit fee with the infrastructure benefit fee being calculated based on the remaining cost of the city at large, considering the ordinance here at an upcoming date.
I make a motion to do number two.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all the voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody need a standing break or anything like that on this next presentation?
We've got 23 minutes before the International Space Station flies over, by the way.
I will get it cleared. Okay, so what I'm just presenting to you guys is basically your approval to sign a document into agreement with Sedgwick County, specifically the sheriff's department, to access and utilize the same records management system that they will be utilizing. So it will improve our efficiency and allow us to have, just improve logistical performance. So Sedgwick County will be migrating to a new records management system, the RMS, that's what it stands for, and a CAD system, the computer automated dispatch system, beginning May 2022 through Tyler Technologies. That is the company, the product is called Tyler New World Law Enforcement Systems, it's a long name, but just think Tyler Technologies or Tyler New World. Sedgwick County has negotiated with Tyler Tech to host the RMS and pay for the outside Sedgwick County police agencies in Sedgwick County to use it for free for their 10-year contract. So for 10 years, we wouldn't have to pay anything, there will be something, but we wouldn't essentially have to be paying the hundreds of thousands of dollars that Sedgwick County will be paying for this software. Our current records management system is named Interpol, but it will not communicate with the Tyler Technologies system directly or the CAD system. So what that means is, the computer system that we have that communicates with dispatch and gives us our calls, all that information that we put in there when we run tags, driver's licenses, on a call, all that information can transfer over seamlessly into the report, so it's not being duplicated. Times, information, all that stuff. Other agencies that have already signed the agreement with Sedgwick County are Derby, Park City, Valley Center, Kechai, Beller, Hayesville, Sedgwick, and Coming Soon, one more agency, I'm not sure who that is, but currently, we use onsite storage for our records management system, so that takes up some storage space. Interpol on our laptops and the officer's patrol vehicles works, but it does run slow because it's going off the, connecting to cellular, it's connecting to the internet or our system here. We also currently use a digital ticketing system called Digiticket, and that, that hardware costs us about $13,000 annually. So the cost that we have with Interpol and Digiticket annually, take that over the 10-year span, we're going to essentially be spending 214,000, 770. Now, we would be having to pay, going with the system, we'd have to pay for some add-on accessories, like being able to have legacy data conversion, accessing what data we have right now, some interfaces with other software, such as evidence labeling and stuff like that, and electronic citations, which would be like the Digiticket replacement. What that would do essentially is, we have five Digitickets that we, and five printers that we are on lease with, Digiticket, that's five. If we move to this other system, every laptop, every car, every officer that has that laptop in their car, has the ability to write that ticket and not have to worry about checking out this Digiticket, and then when that Digiticket doesn't, or this printer doesn't get charged, then it's a cluster. The legal agreement needs to be approved and signed by the head of the council or the mayor, the city clerk, and the city attorney. I've already sent that over to Bob Quigendall, since Ryan was spending some Netflix time, and it's already been approved. So over 10 years, the total cost for us, over 10 years, just for the new records management system that Sedgwick County is paying for, for what we're needing, would only be 53,000 over the 10 years, so that would be about a savings of 161,000. Financials, we have a total one-time cost for us for that ticketing system, third-party products and servicing, 28,352, comes out of the capital improvement fund, police administration and technical services, the IT 9210-6345. We have an ongoing annual expense of two, still a little over, about 2,500, will be the general fund, police administration, and technical IT services as well. Legally, just approve it as form, as to the form, and it is recommended that the council authorize the agreement with Sedgwick County to allow for using the Tyler Technologies software. Just requires your voice approval.
How much do we have, 800?
Hang on, I do actually have that up here.
More if we do this.
Well, the, the unencumbered balance is what we're interested in, and it's, I'd say it's about 800,000. So the true, the true balance is over 3 million, I think, but the money could run by 800,000.
So we got the money.
And we knew Interpol was a stopgap measure, in fact, we started discussing this and working toward an integrated countywide system back when Chief Houston was here. It's just taken that long for the county to get through all the complexities of the different radio upgrades, the technology upgrades, and so.
Kobe kicked this back to about two years ago or so.
Right. So we knew Interpol was a stopgap measure, we also knew at some point we would phase out Digiticket, so none of that is surprising now that we're here.
Okay. Head of the panel.
I'm Lucian Huber.
Second.
By Michael, second by Brent, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. Final treatment set in our municipal wastewater treatment is the disinfection process. Disinfection is required to reproduce, to reduce and destroy the bacteria, virus, and protozoa populations in the wastewater before discharging, discharge into the receiving body of water. At the city's wastewater facility, final treatment is achieved using this ultraviolet technology. Ultraviolet light provides rapid effective inactivation of microorganisms through a physical process. When bacteriobiruses and protozoda are exposed to germicidal wavelengths of UV light, they are instantaneously rendered incapable of reproducing and infecting. Ultraviolet's a safe and effective way, and environmentally friendly way to disinfect water. The UV system at our wastewater facility contains two vessels, obviously double labeled vessel one and two. F1 flow transmissions, transitions between the two vessels to allow the vessels to be, to cool down between usage and extend the life of the UV bulbs and equipment. Periodically, the lamps, quartz leaves, and wipers wear out requiring bulb replacement and rebuild of the vessels. Currently, vessel number two is showing signs of wear due to use and needs rebuilt. The rebuild will include UV lamp. The rebuild will include UV lamp vessels, replacement of the lamps, wipers, brushes, ballasts, and quartz sleeves. Right here is a picture of what the UV vessel looks like. Your effluent flows in here, it is, it flows through the UV, the quartz tubes that the bulbs are in, and it disinfects it, and then it goes on out through the cascades and into As I stated, the rebuild, the ultraviolet lamp vessel includes a replacement of lamps, wipers, brushes, ballasts, and quartz sleeves. Public Works is requesting spending approval to purchase the parts required to rebuild vessel two, including additional spare bulbs and wipers for maintenance of both vessels as needed. So we don't have to wait till they need a full rebuild, we lose a bulb, we can replace it. I see it questioned.
We've done one like three years ago, the one, number one, with like three years.
Yes, yes. Number one was done about three years ago, and this one. And we had a little issue between that point and now. When I came aboard, we, we fixed it, but generally, a, a computer drops, jumps those between the two vessels. And we had some, we had a software issue, and about eight months ago, they came in and fixed us, and now we're moving like we should between the two vessels.
I thought you were going to say they had like a five-year life expectancy or something?
It, that's hard to say. I mean, it's three to five years. Sometimes they are bulbs and with, with different wear, and unfortunately, since we were sitting, running vessel two for a while, it got it, it got it more wear than it should have.
Yeah, so we, because remember it was one that was down, and then we switched to two, and then we replaced one.
And that was kind of interesting to fix that, because the company's out of Texas, and they want two, over $2,000 just to show up. And they wanted to show up and then tell us what was wrong, go back home and show up again and fix it. And I told them, no, we're not doing that. You'll come up once and fix it, because they already knew what the problem was. And so that saved us a little bit of money, but we did get it fixed. What I'm asking for now to repair vessel two and the extra parts is $11,179. It would be allocated 100% to the sewer reserve fund, treatment, and processing. Current fund balance is $260,000. Any additional questions?
Can we just wait till they break out, or are there schedules replacing that on stuff like that?
This one is kind of a, it waited till we needed enough bulbs because it had been used so much, but that's why we're getting additional parts. So as we lose a bulb, or a wiper gets, gets worn, or a quartz sleeve gets worn, we can replace it as needed.
Good.
So if, there are no additional questions?
No additional questions.
Motion.
Motion to approve. You approve number two again?
Motion by Brad. Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, Council. That was good. All right, H7 is a refinish of the pavilion in Linear Park. The pavilion was built in 2018, and as we all know, it's a popular, a popular destination for citizens of Goddard and surrounding communities. In the year since the construction, the pavilion's finished as worn and, and become faded, gray, and dull, with severely degraded protection from the elements. The site requires treatment every three to four years. This will extend the life of the wood, prevent the warping, and maintain the appearance and the soundness of the structure. Also, the sprinklers spray on it, and you know how that does to the wood. It just makes it gray and ugly, and if we don't treat it, it will end up with some rotten disc, additional discoloration. Refinishing it will protect and extend the life of the pavilion, because it does require regular maintenance and refinishing. Here's a couple pictures, you know, the graying we're talking about on the side, and a little bit better up top, should look a little bit like that, but it's getting real gray and just weathered. It's still in good, good shape, but it just needs to be cleaned and refinished. Staff took solicited bids from four companies. We received three responses. The bids were evaluated based on the company's ability to clean, restore, and restore the wood to its original color and apply stain, sealer, and waterproofing to the surfaces. City staff recommends best bidder Deck Rescue LLC. Deck Rescue LLC, they'll power wash the wood and remove the graying and debris, then apply a multi-step acre gray away stain and sealant to all wood panels inside and outside of the structure, mostly outside. The inside will be, not the big trusses, but the, I shouldn't record this, but they will refinish the inside. Cost of that is $10,761, and be allocated to Parks and Rec Fund, Parks and Rec Cost Center. Legal, not a lot involved with that. Are there any questions?
The beans.
Beans, don't worry.
Starts with an S.
Oh.
I can't think of what the term.
How long does this last?
Well, we should get three to five years out of this. This is going to be a regular maintenance, unlike painting a home or something. With it being a stain and a sealant, it's probably not as durable as a paint would be, but I don't believe we want to paint that. We want the wood. That's my thoughts at least.
Well, I think more to maintain our assets.
We got some great paint left in there.
You should go do this. I mean, we have news, power wash it, and put a coat on it.
I've got no problem with that.
Councilman Trede wore his shoulder out painting back.
Yeah. I'm not wrong there. So. Yep. That is definitely a motion.
Motion by Brad, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passed.
Thank you, Council.
Honorable Mayor and Council, you'll see progress on the Starbond site with the, the hotel being encapsulated. Here's the Health Club with the childcare facility just on the other side there, and the ball field's in the background. And you'll see that they have enclosed the, the eaves partially, it looks like, with some drainage supports, and then another view of the facility looking back to the southwest, with a little different view of the hotel, the Health Club facility, the childcare facility, the raised part being the water park, and then this lower lip here being the competitive swimming venue. You received this email, which is essentially from the quarter. Micah updated the numbers of lots, and I thank him for that. You'll see the total number of lots, those available, those sold, with percentages listed there. One thing to note, you'll notice that, that we've sold, as we mentioned, 41 so far in Elk Ridge, which 55 was that magic number for the city's regional lift station there. So we're, we've almost reached that while we're still on the temporary note portion. So no real cost to the city at this point. We have Elk Ridge, Spring Hill, St. Andrews. Spring Hill-St. Andrews in the seasons are, are fully built, so are Autumn Blaze and Popper Edition. So the long and the short of it is, we've only got 28% of our housing stock available, and that includes the unplatted lots that haven't been prepared for development. So we're doing good. I'd say we're nearing capacity, so we're soon in need of additional residential units here as well. And, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, trying to get that, that magic 3,003 miles is really going to help us as we try and improve the quality of life for both shopping and dining opportunities for our existing residents.
Not to interrupt you, but I called after we got this email. I called Brian later that day, and I think, I've been sharing this with all the developers at the time, because this shows, it gives you a visual of the actual momentum that the city of Goddard has, and we don't want to lose that. So I think this is, this is really great, and thank you to Micah for putting this together. This is really good.
Happy to be of light. View of Arbor Creek. Another view looking back to the south southwest. Cloverleaf, and you can see construction of Phase Two in the background, above here and on the right side of the right photograph. Elk Ridge continues to progress toward building its final phase. You can see Rustic Creek, which is where the change order was approved earlier tonight. And then notable upcoming agenda items, we'll have our third quarter reports at the next council meeting. We'll also have development for that southwest growth area. We'll have a discussion on that, and possible consideration of some items moving forward for development in that area. And then in November, we'll look at some planning commission renewals. We'll look at upgrading the security and Wi-Fi firewall system, as well as an update on the community center, which to the public, I know the council's well aware, but to the public, we haven't forgot yet. It's, it's just a matter of trying to find the right location and doing so in a manner that prevents folks from going out and trying to secure the ground while we're working on it. And then also get back to revisiting the design regulations. Are there any questions for myself or the city's department teams at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Larry, what do you have?
We had a nice crowd for the Fall Festival. It was amazing to see that didn't rain the whole way. Everybody just had a good time. The sixth staff did a good job to keep the things cleaned up. Appreciate that. Didn't have any trouble, so I guess they did a good job.
I guess.
I'm not giving too much credit all the time.
Brian, then you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to thank Angie for steering the Fall Festival. We appreciate you and what the committee and what Dan and the Lions did, so thank you both. I thought it went excellent, and so thank you for your work, Angie.
Thank you.
And thanks, Dan.
Sarah?
Pretty much with this guy said Angie did amazing organizing and keeping everything going, and Dan, Lions Club, did a great job with their input and everything that they organized, and Public Works were visible, and anytime anybody asked for anything, or not that much was needed, because they were on top of it. They did a great job. PB was visible, did a good job, and heard nothing but compliments from the public, and I think we had a good attendance, a wide variety of ages and demographics, the food trucks. What, we have two that didn't sell out?
We had only one that didn't sell out, and then one had, one restocked and came back the next day, but yeah. So I think it was good, man.
Michael?
What they said, and despite it raining on our parade, I was really surprised at the turnout. I even, you know, saw a bunch of people that aren't from Goddard there that, I was like, hey, what you doing here? And I'm like, we're just checking it out. And really loved the, the Sunday worship at noon, even though I didn't, I wasn't necessarily out there, but I, I was able to poke my head out and see what was going on. So that was a nice mission this year.
All right?
Oh, man, I tell you what. Did anybody have the fried peanut butter and jelly?
No, I had a catfish in the table.
It didn't take two hands.
Oh, man. The fried PVA, it was, it was good. It was definitely good. So if you, if you missed it, then all you have to do is go to Walley World or Dylan's and get those little crustables and just fry them up. That's all you have to do. They're delicious.
Well, I, I can't say, I can't say much more than what they've already said. I, I got to ride Larry's Corvair from the Lions Club, and so when I was out there throwing candy out of the Corvair, I was so proud to see how many people were still there out in the rain. That, it said to me that the community wanted to be involved, they wanted to be there, and it couldn't have been done without all of you guys' help, so thank you. Other than that, that's all I have to say. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.